A minute after one, we'll come back into our session, our regular session that will continue from this morning. Please silence or shut off your cell phones if you're in the meeting, if you would please. And we have business to do. Our first item is the Air Quality Bureau of Air Quality. And we're waiting, well, we're not waiting, but if, I'm sorry, I'm trying to name Rachel.
Rachel Sacca.
Yeah, if she calls in or scypes in, we will adjust at that time. But you ready? Go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, Shallow and Waters, glad to be here. Peter Bird, Department of Environmental Quality, Air Quality, from our Bend office, representing our eastern region, our eastern Cascades. Thank you for being here today. Just wanted to give, well, potentially, a background on particular matter if our Commissioner Lacks are here, but they aren't, so I will skip that.
Okay. I didn't acknowledge, we do have Counselor-elect Nikki Taylor with us. Going to be a town counselor, and I did want to acknowledge that, but neither Commissioner-elect was able to be here.
So I will just give an update on the PM Advanced Plan update for the year, and spare you the background on particular matter and the health implications, as well as the non-attainment implications. That's the big message I had, was on the potential economic downside of things. Okay. Well, I just want to acknowledge that the Air Quality Committee put together the update for a PM Advanced Plan, without from DQ, of course, but elements of it came from the Air Quality Committee, which we have a few folks here. And they've been doing, meeting monthly, or not quite monthly, throughout the year, work on air quality issues, as we especially roll into our wood heating season around now, and with our wood stove advisories. Let's see. Well, I can give you a background, if you have, you have a copy of it for me?
We do have a copy.
Okay. Yeah, you understand where the monitor is?
Yes.
South Center and M Street, down the street.
I think Commissioner Shallow did.
Yes, just down the street a bit, so we continue to monitor there. And our monitor currently has an nephrometer. It's the electronic reading and fingerprint in very few seconds, and correlated to PM 2.5. But the actual physical sample and reference monitor is about an every third day sample, and that takes a mass reading over the 24-hour period. Collects it on a filter, and then the filter's analyzed and weighed, and so it gets down to that, so real official reading. But the nephrometer is correlated to the PM 2.5 analyzer, giving us accurate readings as we go through the day. So day-to-day, we use a nephrometer to gauge where we are, where we've been. Okay, so jumping into 2017, I guess overall, if you remember 2014, we came together to get the PM Advanced Plan, which you were a part of, and came up with some original strategies and activities. This is carry-on, an update for that plan. For 2017, we did have a rough year, after a couple of good years. We had some challenges early on in December, and then again, in the end of the year, passed out a nephrometer readings for that time. These are the readings for the, throughout the year. With the orange level being the, this is on the air quality index basis, so orange levels basically is equivalent to the National Air Quality Standard, 35 micrograms, PM 2.5, on a 24-hour or daily basis. So see, we had a few, a few rough days earlier in the year, and these are all the unofficial readings, based on the nephrometer, not necessarily the official readings based on the monitor itself, which is about every third day. So we had a few rough days over the standard, early on in January, there's a couple cold and shorter inversion time frame.
So, so Peter, back just for clarification, the official, is it, does it mirror, is the nephrometer, if I'm pronouncing that right, and the actual analysis, are they mirroring each other?
Yeah, they're pretty close. So if we had, I'm not sure which days, but we picked up a couple of days right in the beginning, over the standard, and they were, they were pretty close.
So it's pretty accurate both ways? Thank you.
Because we had more than, I think it was maybe four days by the nephrometer over the standard, we picked up, I think three of them actually, on the official monitor.
And then so for official record, is what is actually the analysis?
Yes, the physical analysis of the, the federal reference monitor is what we call it. If you jump to the end of the year, we did have an air stagnation period of about 12 to 14 days in December last year. It's pretty rough, cold, kind of, and slowly degraded on our compliance, had a number of days over the standard. In spite of calling red days, quite often there, we had some non-compliance at that time as well.
What are these, in late August or September?
That's all from wildfire. So that does show you, we had plenty, many more days of wildfire impact over the standard in July, in August timeframe, mostly in August. I have another histogram to show you here in a minute.
Now, you don't happen to have 2018s or any of those?
No, they probably look worse.
Well, I'll answer that question, I'll answer it down now. This is up to the, into September, and actually shows a history throughout all the, throughout all the time, from 2004 until 2018. And it's pretty telling, that shows you, yeah, you can see back in 2011, 2013, we had trouble at the beginning of the year, and the end of the year, a lot of red days. 2013 is particularly a bad year.
So Peters, you're talking about this historically, I mean, I've been involved in this back in the agency days, and I don't remember the conversion time from PM 10 to PM 2.5, but how, how is that referenced here, when we go back to say 2004?
I, I think they did the correlation on PM 2.5 to give it, give that an even correlation for PM 2.5. I'm not sure on that, though.
Okay.
So I'd have to, I'd have to answer that, have to figure that one out, and it'd be good to know, because I always assumed it was correlated back to PM 2.5 for this, but up until, oh, we're... We were monitoring for PM 10 until about 2006. But we did pick up PM 2.5 from about 1999 to 2003, we did monitor. And then we did for a number of years, because we thought we were fine, and we were fine with the standard at the time, and then the standard was lowered from 65 micrograms to 35.
So how do we correlate that in here as far as air quality, and needing different standards for good, moderate, unhealthy, et cetera?
This should be on the same basis of where, it should be, but I don't have that answer, I was just assuming it was.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would show, gosh, in 2005, we had a couple of orange days, but that would be with 65 micrograms being the standard, and that'd be, there'd be a lot more oranges and reds if it's correlated back to today's standard. I think it's on today's basis, so it's in uniform basis. We had more wildfire impacts. And actually, back, back at that time, we did okay with PM 2.5, we were pretty low there also, in the wintertime.
We've been monitoring for PM 2.5 since 2007.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't actually think we got the correlation on this chart, personally.
One wonder, that would be the easy thing for me to assume that it was normalized, and easy thing I could see on the other end, person doing the analysis, that they're just taking data and running it through.
And rather than trying to mix some apples and oranges.
Yeah, it could be.
Quite frankly, I believe air quality is much greater, or much better nowadays than it was then, so if you did correlate it, it should show more orange and red days.
But we don't do the orange days, right? We don't.
Oh, we would, this would show up.
Right, it'll show up on there, but we never call it an orange day. It's just yellow, green, or red.
Yeah, for a wood stove advisor, it's anything over, over the standard.
Okay.
It's a little too complex for.
I don't want to bog this down, but, you know.
That's a good one.
Well, these things end up becoming historical, and they become fact that aren't fact, and standards that need to be clearly identified, for the record.
Well, and with that said, Commissioner, as in our world, and we have the discussion on prescribed burns to catastrophic wildfires, that, that is good for us to have to talk with our Congressmen or Senators, or whoever we're lobbying for, the catastrophic fires and impact.
Yeah, especially, and that's where we are, at least good there, for the last, say, six years, seven years. There, you can, you can see the impacts we have had from wildfire. 2016 was a mild year for fires all around, but last two years specifically, it is pretty hard.
Yeah.
And we're supposedly going to continue in that trend. Well, so we had a rough time in 2017 with a, when you, when you look at the air quality standard, it's the 98 percentile of data that gives you a value for each year, and then it's the three-year average of, of the three years, three years in a row of that 98 percentile, to come up to compare with the standard. For 2017, that value we had was 56 micrograms, a pretty high number, we had a number of high days, whereas 2015 and 16 were much lower. If you turn the next page, page three, shows a three-year rolling average, where we had from 2014 to 2016, we're under the standard with an average of about 31 micrograms, but now we're, we're just over at 36 micrograms for 2015 and 2017 rolling. So officially, we're in non-compliance, or I shouldn't say officially, unofficially, we're non-compliance with the air quality standard. However, EPA hasn't drawn that line in the sand. They don't until they look and reevaluate the standard all afresh again, which they're likely to do in about two years. Look at it, see, is it adequate? Is it 35 adequate? Do they not, do they adjust it? But at that time, then they also can open up the window to say, who else out there is supposed to be, who's, who's really out of, out of compliance and who's in compliance? Although there's a formal way to get back into compliance if you were out of compliance, but they give a fresh look about that time. So fortunately, we haven't been evaluated, and in part because of the PM Advanced Program we're, we're working on, they know that we're trying, we're working on things, and that does help, but they're not likely to recommend us in non-compliance until they have to. So we're just over the standard this time, we really would like a, a low year, another low year to bring us down. So far this year, we have had zero days over the standard, back from January up until now.
Peter, let me.
With luck.
Well, and those days are November 1st to February 28th.
Yeah, that, those are tricky times.
Yeah, yeah, those are the ones that actually count for, correct? So you're talking from?
Pretty, pretty January, February, then starting this? Pretty much, yeah.
And starting November of this year? That's the window you were just, I just want to make sure I'm on track.
Officially, it could be in October as well, if we had wood stove problems, but, or God forbid, some people prescribed burning, causing scenes, but, but that typically, typically doesn't happen. If it did happen, we'd have something like it from a wildfire somewhere.
Right.
Which, which wildfire does not count against us. Means, back to your point.
Yeah, wildfire doesn't count against it, but I thought that only events that happened from November 1st to February 28th count against it.
It's theoretically, it's year-round.
Theoretically, it's year-round.
And it depends on, then, the cause of it. If it's wildfire, then it doesn't count against us. So if we had a bad day in May, due to whatever reason, open burning, or prescribed burning, whatever reason, it could count against us.
Who gets to make that call, because I'm seeing plumes right now of prescribed burning?
Unfortunately, they aren't hitting us much, because.
Who makes the call, that those either impact or don't impact?
They wouldn't, if they do impact us, they do, they impact us.
So if, so if the monitor shows an impact that day on a prescribed burn, it doesn't go against, that doesn't give us a red day?
If we, I'll just back that up and say, if we did have a red day from prescribed burn, it would be a red day, and it could count against us.
Even though it is outside of the jurisdiction of the town of Lakeview and Lake County and the urban health boundary?
Like yesterday, there was a prescribed burn.
Yeah, south corners.
And I didn't know that until late yesterday afternoon.
South corners.
And it was stagnant yesterday, because I drove around for what, an hour yesterday, trying this pinpoint where the heavy smoke was coming from. I took pictures, I got some from the mill, but it was the steam coming off the boilers, I got, you know.
That's a real key thing right there, Dawn, because I drive in every morning, so I see the inversion.
Right.
And yesterday morning, driving in.
It was bad.
Because it's like, oh my God, and then I get closer and it's steam.
It's the steam from the mill, and then you have the steam coming off of the geothermals that are here at the south end as well. And not only do you have that, but then you have your people that are burning, and somebody's burning trash, just not sure which person it is. I'm still trying to find that person, but I will. But it's, yesterday, there was a prescribed burn yesterday.
It is in a mix then, too.
Yeah, and that's why I think we had a yellow day, because it was stagnant, and we had very little wind.
And that does count against us.
Yeah.
And we do have agreements with Collins Products and the Forest Service to not burn, when we have, when we call red days, November 1st through February 28th. They have agreed to not do prescribed burning at that time, but before then, they can, and then they just go off of, or the Department of Forestry's burn advisory.
I have to say, I really misunderstood that. I thought that if there was prescribed burning going on, whether they agreed to it or not, and it impacted, that didn't go against us on a red, yellow day, but it does go against us.
That's, that's, I've had the same understanding, and I'm very involved in that.
And so, for me, how can I support, which I do support, prescribed burning, but, I mean, we don't know what's going to be a red day, it might be middle of the day before it becomes a red day.
Yeah, we'd have to make that determination earlier.
And who gets to make that determination?
That would be Dawn, of the town. That would be, if we felt that we had problems with, potential problems with prescribed burning, we should do it early in the day, 8:00 AM, so that gives them a chance, if they were planning to burn, to not burn. Was that in, was that in California, too?
I have, I have.
That'd be another, that'd be another issue.
I have, but you're talking federal agencies or state agencies that have whole cruise planned, a whole day planned, and their whole performance for managing their, our land that they manage for it.
Well, their burning office, DQ.
My approvals.
Or their ODS approval.
Yes.
They're watching forecast.
Yeah, and ODS forecast for the other day was not too bad. It was okay, you can burn, don't ignite before 11, don't burn, don't ignite, have zero emissions fast core, et cetera. There's something around that timeframe, and don't burn if you're so many miles downwind from an SSRA, which like you, is a smoke sensitive receptor, or SSRA. So they have specific instructions. Whether you follow it, would be a question, and potentially, they could not follow it that has happened. Most 99% of the time, they follow the prescription. Occasionally, occasionally it happens where no smoke is drifting in, they just made the call that they think it would, but it was essentially downwind or downstream, or smoke was not dispersing, or there's just cooling, stagnating. Yeah, it could be an issue, and that's why we have agreements with.
Honestly, Peter, I think the issue is, and I don't mean to get on my, my bandstand here, but the real issue, the real health hazards that we met with when we found out southern Oregon is, and it, it's too bad those communities between our town of Lakeview and Lake County and DQ, as well as any other potential partners, couldn't really get, and I know this isn't necessary for today's discussion, but couldn't get united in that the real health issue times are these large catastrophic wildfires. That's what impacts us the greatest. It impacts us during the time of year, not when we're huddled around a wood stove, trying to stay warm around outside, trying to breathe air, but in the summer, then we're actually trying to enjoy it, and kids are trying to enjoy it. And, you know, we just take away one more tool, because I am a proponent of prescribed fire done properly. It's to reduce that issue of summertime wildfire emissions, and it's just counting to what we're doing with smoke management.
And it's, for sure, I would say, it's something that's challenging for the agency, and we're, we're trying to look ourselves in the mirror and say, well, in the last two years here, clearly, air and health issues have been over the summer. And we had a few days this last year in, for wood stoves, but not nearly the magnitude, not nearly, as the wildfire days ever.
See, my issue, though, other than the Watson Fire later in the season, there weren't any fires here.
No.
Yeah, we were greatly impacted by the smoke in southern Oregon and northern California.
Exactly.
It is not a local issue only.
Hundred fifty, 100 miles away.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm not sure where it's going to, because it's a, it's a whole western, western multi-state issue, and it gets into what they call the transboundary pollution, or cross-state pollution.
But let's break it simple, in our world, if we have healthy forest and the catastrophic fires are down to 5,000 acres or less, it corrects the problem.
Yes.
Just make that happen, Peter.
But anyway, I was taking us in a different direction for today, but it is so frustrating to me personally, and.
It is too, being in, involved in a wildfire call, and then all the wildfire excited, it breaks your heart, knowing you're down, day-to-day, people are back, it's either night, it's not even better, or maybe a couple hours in a day, but when that was a constant stream of smoke, you know, it was worse that night than, even in the wintertime, for a couple hours.
Well, this is a true story, when Congressman Walden was here this summer, Commissioner-elect, and me as Commissioner, I reported to him that our carbon monoxide detector went off middle of the night, windows are open, I live out of town, his smoke alarm went off middle of the night, and he just lived through, losing his place to a fire. That's real. Congressman Walden uses that in DC. That's what we lost this summer as citizens, and that's, not wood stove, that's, that's how we lived with this one. And if it's as unhealthy as it's always been presented to us, is, we were in very tough conditions.
The way I turn that around is for us in the wintertime, is to do the best we can to have the healthiest air, to have every day as healthy, to help make up for all those days that we had of unhealthy. That's the best spin I could really put on it, is as many healthy days as we can capture or afford. And if the only days in the year were in the wintertime, so be it, but they aren't now. Now I'm just trying to catch, my lungs are trying to catch up. It do, then there is a chronic impact for us, that every day of clean air is good for us, in, in a couple of different ways, but based on that previous exposure that we had, it's, it's nicer for us to have clean air, day after day after day, this current year, to help our bodies clear it out.
We appreciate listening to us.
I agree.
On our forest issues, but it is, whenever you start looking at this, and the unhealthy parts of it, and we're impacted from California and everything, and it impacts, what our records show, our, it's hard to follow, I guess, if you say that.
Yeah, we're stuck, we're stuck with rules, we're stuck with, you know, where I'm going to go. But yeah, that's why we did share, sharing this one to show, at least for our last seven years, I'm sure you could say, if it's a, the correlation's right, because it's a PM 2.5 correlation, an AQY throughout the year. And we'd love that year like 2016 again.
So if we go into more red days this year, and DQ takes over, what happens?
And DQ takes over?
Wouldn't they take over? Because they will, if they take over, doing the air quality part of it.
Not sure I understand.
So it's like climate, unattained.
Oh, oh, if you become.
Yes, yeah. Sorry, I couldn't even think of the word.
Well, not, not a whole lot would happen, other than, on the economic side, things would kick in.
And that.
We would be restraining on, we'd have a very limited air shed for increases in emissions into the airshed, it would be very small, what we could allow for increases, without going through offsets and.
So to attract a light industry or something that has emissions?
Right.
We wouldn't be attractive at all?
No.
Yeah, just mild, just little mild changes at, at say Cornerstone, and it'd be all right.
Which could impact the town.
Oh, absolutely. And for a long time, could take years for us to.
At least.
Become attainment, once you're non-attainment, it can take a number of years to get out of that. At least a three-year period, showing clean, clean air for three years first, and then starts the process. So Cloud of Falls is doing right now, they're just being able to get into the reattainment stand, status, you know, apply for, to go into a mate, what's called a maintenance area. I see some of those rules of potentially changing in the future, too, partly because of wildfire smoke, but that's my western view of the world, and I don't know how these guys operate, they may not seem to feel it's the same. But they need to change something, because their formula and the plans they have, they need these plans. The world is just changing, we'll be fast for that. And, and this really impacts areas, like a small little lakeview could be impacted for essentially 20-year timeframe, if you go. 20-year timeframe if you don't attain it.
Well, a little sarcasm here. On our non-attainment days in Lakeview with that inversion, I'll take a hundred times over from the smog and the stuff I see in the cities where they can't even see the stars and they call that healthy. I'll take our unhealthy wood smoke from wood stoves tenfold over. So a little sarcasm, but it doesn't make common sense that this city that's putting out all the chemicals and everything there, they're not here on attainment, a wood stove in a small little rural area here that has an inversion problem, seven days out of the year.
And part of it is due to what we don't know and what we're slowly finding now is the toxicity that people are living in, that can't be healthy for us. And even if you say, oh, we are in the unhealthiest air, or you say, Lakeview in the state or in the country, our climate falls or whatever during the wildfire season, that's only one kind of smoke, one kind of, the year-round exposed to the diesel, especially in the state. And all the other chemical mix that's there, year, day after day, is horrible.
Maybe it's my day to be sarcasm, but we got a living dinosaur here, the 32 years of wood smoke, wood smoke fighting it out there. And he is 10 years older than me and looks 10 years younger. The wood smoke is terrible on him. He was in it day in and day out. The preserving wells.
Well, it pretty likely. It has.
You know, where it has been proven as unhealthy, and you talked about our firefighter, men and women out there in the wildfire world, they're in it, and they're in it deep, in much more concentrated part of it.
There's more studies being done on healthers, well, on wildfires fighters currently. Catch one of those now and then.
And most all of us from these rural areas either have family, kids, or friends that are very active in that, and so I don't mean to belittle the health issues of it, because it is a concern problem. I'll let you go on with your presentation, because there are some positives in here.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll get to your, where are the implemented strategies, that we do our wood stove advisory call daily. Usually we do make that call in the afternoon or mid-afternoon. We could change it to the morning if we need to, which actually is a good idea for the first part of the year, when there's still potential prescribed fire out there.
So the town does all the monitoring and all that. I guess if it was going to be a call in the morning, that might impact their employment and the time to, I don't want to speak for you guys.
No, it's okay.
But, you know, there is, if decisions are made, the managing part of the town, they have to manage their employees to the hours it takes to get that out to public too. I'm sorry, I don't want to cause over to your guys this night, but.
If you're first thing in the morning.
I usually do, like, I can monitor it from home. It's super easy to monitor from home. The only thing I have to do at town hall is run up, change the flag, and change the light in the window, because I can do everything from my computer at home. So it does cut down on that a little bit, but I mean, Roberta still pays me for my time that I've put down for it. If I have to go drive around or whatever.
That's the part I'm.
There's times where I just grab the kids, let's go for a drive. And, I mean, we do, we look for chimneys that are burning on red days. Oops, sorry. It's, it's not a bad thing to go out and look. I'd love to take you guys around and show you the route. I'd love to show you the DQ website and how I've come up with the numbers and how I call the day. I mean, I'm willing to show anybody that wants to know. It's easy, it's, it took me a little while to figure out the new DQ system, I will have to say, because they changed it a lot, but it's for the better, because you get your wind, it tells you what your wind is going to be for that day. It already calculates what it says in the National Weather Service, and it pinpoints that with your DQ website, so that you can know what your mixing heights and stuff are going to be.
Yeah, it's partly, I think it'd be a great thing for the board and the council.
I'm willing to show anybody. It's a great site.
Yeah, it's really interesting that you get into weather law more, you play, gets another plebiscuitary charge. It's not too, not too bad a thing, but I'm a geek, so.
Can I make a comment? We tried with the school to get them so that we could have the kids in and learn the program, so that, you know, the kids start learning at a young age, and, you know, so it's ingrained in them, and then having a flag at the school that maybe when the people put the flag out in the morning, or whatever, they could put a yellow, red, or green flag out. That hasn't been receptive, so we still need to work on that too, you know, to try to help the schools understand how important it is. Because we don't want to reach that, I don't want DQ in here every day with a thumb on us.
And you know, Roberta, with this last year of the wildfire, when the smoke, so many more parents and kids became aware, because they weren't able to go out and play, they weren't able to practice their sports. Our parents said, you're not going out in this today, so the misfortune of that may be quite.
We had to close the pool two or three days.
Exactly.
You know, and that's some things that, that's kids, all they get to do, you know? So, yeah.
And there was a lot less criticism on me this, so far this year, knock on the lid.
Melon, it's just. I think we have Rachel online.
Yeah, she joined, but I asked her, she had audio, but she hasn't responded.
Rachel, no audio yet?
Hello, from here, can you hear us?
Yes.
Oh. Oh, good.
Sorry, our computers crashed, so we had no emails, so I was trying to figure out what we were all, so when we finally got back home, we realized we were on the GoToMeeting, so we're halfway here. And I have Dee Will with me, and Dee will be doing some more of the PM 2.5 work as well, so she wanted to observe.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. I'm not sure if you have.
We're just wrapping up, Rachel, so thank you.
If you have anything to add at this point, we have Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Winters with us today.
Can you hear Rachel? Okay, Rachel?
Oh, I can hear you fine, and I can see you guys fine too.
Oh.
Oh, great.
Smiling, I can't see camera.
Well, we were just talking about wood stove advisory calls, and doing those at different times, the complexity of it, which isn't too bad, but it can be when you're really trying to, heaven hodge, when you get a red day. There's times when it is difficult on the borderline days. And we'll cross that bridge when we get there for this year. We do have a little difference in sole source heat, that in town, there is no more exemption for sole source heat. We're pushing on having backup heat available in all locations, so that whether it's 10 days a year, five days a year, or whatever, there's backup heat available versus a wood stove. But that's currently in the county, I believe, you can still have sole source exemption.
Correct.
Some things that we can look at in the strategies too for our offices. Let's see, we did our wood stove changeout program, wrapped it last year, is pretty effective. We had a good, solid turnout. Don't know how many of those were, you know, problem houses, you always wish you could pin it down to the problem houses, but you can't. But we did have a good participation. And we do have, at this time, about $20,000 that the town has in funds available for future wood stove changeouts as part of a revolving loan program where there's that much money available now. So we'll be working on, with Roberta and the town, on pursuing a few more changeouts. Whatever way we look at those, whether they're complete changeouts or partial changeouts with a major incentive, cost sharing, and work with that.
So, Peter, the wood stove changeout was a great program, the dollars it came toward, but there's no more dollars, other than this $20,000, which is, we're talking 750,000, 20,000, it's like nothing.
Four seventy.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're lucky. There's $7,000 to $10,000 on some of the changeouts, four to five on other ones, that's what I hear. But when we represent communities and counties and towns that in our schools, we have 70-plus percent assistance for food and lunches and stuff, a lot of people can't afford to change out their stoves. And if we don't find some funding, somebody, DQ, EPA, the town and the county doesn't have a pot of money sitting there to do that. And we implement very strict guidelines on our citizens, as it's mandatory. It's tough on these rural areas. And so, in your will, if there's ever any place that we can put pressure to try to get funding for changeout, let us know.
Okay.
Because we need that for our citizens. We need it for that, not only changeout, but legalization. We can change out the stove, and then the houses, got 19, 20 windows in it that the air is close to it. So, anyway, sort of on my bandwagon is, as we in government do mandatory things on our citizens, they can afford to do or comply with mandatory rules, and that's a real challenge for me as an individual person, that I have a hard time with that.
So, Commissioner Winters?
Yes.
This is Rachel with DQ. I just wanted to mention that there is an effort, I know that's sort of being spearheaded by the City of Oak Ridge, to sort of see if we can get some more funding to do wood smoke reduction efforts during this next legislative session. So, would it be possible for me to, like, mention you all as being interested in being part of that effort to kind of see if we can get some additional funding to provide to local communities? Because I know they're trying to see if we can get a larger pot, you know, and some of that could be used for changeouts in Lakeview, you know, also help out Oak Ridge, things like that. So I know there's stuff that you just during this next session to do that.
Absolutely, Rachel. And the makeup here as far as for the Board of Commissioners is, we have two that are stepping down and two new ones coming on, and we will appoint somebody to the committee to the PM advancement plan. I can't remember exactly what it's called. So yes, it would be appropriate, and whichever Commissioner ends up as that liaison for the county would probably be the one to be pushing forward on helping for any legislation or support. So yes, short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. And I also wanted to let you know that that is sort of, you know, in the works, recognizing that, you know, we're trying to find any sort of sources of funding to help communities.
We're looking for perhaps an ask of a couple million dollars. For a sizable part of that, for wood stove changeouts in a few select areas, like Lakeview, Clamott Falls, Oak Ridge, would be the target ones at this point. Besides some funding to help out other areas of concern, whether it's up in Washington County, is there picking off a program, Heineville, or where, Medford, wherever. And we will probably push through the regional solutions team again, exploring avenues there, essentially going back and beating around the bushes for funding, for potential funding, and to keep our regional solutions team alive and aware that the funding is still needed, and sizable funding, in fact, similar to this last round of $750,000, a huge year, as well as money to help get natural gas up into town.
Keep moving, right?
That's on my mind, too, is like, let's get that here. As you think of wood stove, wood stoves, it's like, well, if we can get gas stoves, how fast can we get that, can get that as infrastructure in place?
Well, it's interesting, as I say that, Congressman Walden and I got to spend the day together a week ago, and he talked about natural gas and the prices, and I've been monitoring that, and they're relatively expensive, natural gas. They went down like 2.6% below what it was 15 years ago. So it is a great thing for us to have that available. I know we've made through the community service agreement, a real commitment here at the county to get the right size line at least up to the proposed Red Rock and the elements to get it all into town, Yellowstone, get a franchise here. We'd be off to the races with another really good alternative.
Yes. That can happen sooner than later with the construction of that line, can it just keep going?
Yep.
Instead of stopping for a while.
There's talks going on that's.
Yep. Well, we'll be.
We're working on it.
We'll push it through in the angles we have, but I think here, and we'll leave more there. Let's see, public education awareness, we've continued all our awareness methods. A lot of this, oh, through handing out any materials that we can at any time. It gets hard to come up with new ways to hand out same old materials sometimes, but especially when we're knocking on doors for people that have smoking stacks, that's a great time to have education, and that's a big effort at this point.
And I think should be able to answer this, but I'm not sure if someone's directed towards Dawn. We as the county through community service supply a lot of firewood, and we're trying to make sure that that's well-seasoned and everything. Are we handing out pamphlets? Do you guys give us pamphlets? And we're.
I have never gotten, I have not ever given out pamphlet.
We're missing, we're missing that right there, because we're putting a lot of wood to disable people that qualify, and that's our opportunity as a team to be able to get those pamphlets out there to people on the educational side.
Absolutely.
And I have that discussion, probably not with the right people, but Dawn, would you work with?
Absolutely.
Work with Jake?
Yeah.
And because you already have the pamphlets on.
Yeah.
And they're delivering up to three cords to people, and it's a great opportunity.
Burnwise information, green, yellow, red.
And how to dampen down and what they can and can't, yeah.
That's a must. I'm sorry that that wasn't happening.
Well, I apologize, I thought it was on our part, I had that discussion within our own departments.
I know they were delivering.
Anyways, so it wasn't. From here forward, would you make it happen?
Excellent.
No, absolutely.
Because other people are burning.
In fact, I can get some to Jake tomorrow.
You sat here, we're a representative community that's right at non-compliance, and we provide one year's, 300 cord, I think. Yeah. So, we sat here with this presentation, but we also have community service that we provide for our citizens that need it.
Well, I think we just solved the problem. We're through. I hope so. So. When did that wood mostly deliver?
From about October through May.
Okay.
And we've set up, it's governed through class for the qualification, Clamott Lake Community Service, but our, and the prison and the county work well together, the SOMO works well together, and it's a great service, but we need to make sure those people are receiving that.
So, my question to you, Brad, is, when I do discuss this with Jake, do, for the people that he has already given wood to, will he have them take back the pamphlets? Or?
Probably not, Dawn, but, you know, let's just go from here forward.
Okay.
And if you would like to meet with you and Jake, why?
Yeah.
Well, they'll always make the full delivery, so chances are the few that they've already serviced, they'll be going back to.
Okay, absolutely.
They'll be able to catch them.
And the thing about this, this goes more than just their growth boundary, we can educate the county.
Absolutely.
Because we deliver wood more like also.
Yeah.
And they're not part of this, but it will educate them on ways that maybe they're more efficient at home.
Okay, absolutely, I would rather get that.
If you want to make that many pamphlets or whatever.
If it helps, then absolutely. I'm up for whatever, I can do the help.
So how many times can I throw you sideways, Peter?
Oh, that's great. This is a good, this is a good one. Reaching people.
Well, and really what I found, I've built quite a few calls over the years, people very upset that they can't afford to run electricity and everything. On the educational side is just whenever you explain, we have seven red days basically a year and they're not all in one month. They're normally asking you to use an alternative heat source, maybe one day out of the month or two days out of the month. Most people are more susceptible to that. The emotional side of it is people think, oh my God, I'm going to be heating with electricity for a whole month. I can't afford that.
Right.
And so education wise, whenever I'm able to talk to them on the phone is, no, it's not what you're thinking. We just want you to adjust for those red days and yellow days.
Worst case, like last year, it's probably six, seventy, you know, during this stagnation period, but then it ended. We had that error. You'd be needing electricity for that, I'm not sure. Let's see, we also do outreach, radio, website, Facebook. I'm sure there's a hotline still going.
Yeah.
Call in the hotline reader board. We actually have two reader boards now.
I want to put a thank you out there to the town of Lakeview that are, I've got on my fair board have, we have a reader board out there now. The town, council and everybody contributed to and we use it also.
That's great, yeah.
So thank you.
Now Brad, do you have, sorry to interrupt, a website for you guys that you want something posted on there that?
Our website?
Yeah.
I don't see why we couldn't. Every tool that we can use.
Right.
They get to make that connection to get them to y'all to post it.
Cause I'll call every day.
Please.
By all means.
I think we're set up so it can be done by somebody. You don't have to do it every time.
I think the easiest thing is because we have the link to the town is just to put the link on our homepage and just say for wood smoke information, click here and go right to your site.
Absolutely. That would be great.
More simple.
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Brad, when you talked about the reader board at the Fairgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
Did I, I heard you say that it is receptive to use for the book writing calls?
Not to, I forget exactly.
It's red days only.
Red, yeah.
Red days only.
I'm stuttering. I'm wondering what the green one was, so I think it was red.
The last I heard was that we weren't going to be able to use that, so.
Oh no, we use it.
For red days.
I remember it for red days.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
It was for red days. Cause I told to put it on a green doom. She's like, whoa, it's for red days. I'm like, okay, so I misunderstood. So that was probably a miscommunication on me. So I apologize.
Well, that's still good. Gets a word out.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, we'll jump to the future efforts unless Rachel, there's something there that you wanted to highlight.
No, I think you covered it all.
We'll certainly continue on with our strategies for the most part as is and always looking for new ways to do that outreach like as we hand off wood. For free wood, very important. One area we're looking for is to, any opportunities for education outreach through the town or the county, whether speaking to a group of people, talking to people. Anything on education outreach in that way. Well, you know, because of that discussion between the town and the county with the program we have. I'm wondering if it would be beneficial to get with all of, well, specifically the Forest Service and ask them to include a single page that we provide them in the wood permit program. So when they initially.
That's a great idea.
Not only do we have the maps in there, but we'll have some guidance for people.
Well, and one step further because quite a few people get permits from Collins Company. Maybe they would be receptive to that.
Absolutely.
Be probably more receptive because.
However, everybody that's getting wood, cutting wood knows upfront.
Yeah.
This information.
Those are great ideas. Thank you.
Yep. That is great. New ideas are.
And if they don't like it, they can use it as a fire strike.
Sure.
Thanks Brad.
Well, we know that we build with a lot of different people.
That's right. That's right.
That's excellent.
And blame it all on Dan. He started off that direction this morning.
Thanks Dan.
Definitely, we're looking for different ways to outreach, whether it's simple like that or speaking, any way to reach out to groups. We think we will relook at the school education program. There's, the DPA has a pretty canned program now with a curriculum that's a one day curriculum. And I think it has different grade levels assigned to it as well. That might be, might be anything that the teacher could pick up. But if we want something that the teacher can pick up a little bit without us having to teach or train or any go with me like that, it'd be a pretty nice thing to do. We may make another go at that here, maybe not this year, but we'll start working on it. So we talked about the town block grant. A few things that we do want to look at really is our ordinances, whether it's the town or the county and then both together to evaluate where they're aligned, where they aren't aligned. Any room for opportunities? Now it's been about five, four years since they're written, they're written differently or augmented, supplemented with a different opportunity or a different way of getting compliance. We'll work on that, especially with the new commission. They're trying.
You're saying I'm not?
No.
I'm saying this one.
And we might look at.
I hear you thinking. See whether it's mine.
We look at new, an opportunity for if we could get a very expensive air monitor, another fairly photometric type basis. But there's some out now that are about two hundred and fifty dollars. And if there is a need for one or it's good to have one either down south here or wherever we want. Or a couple of them, you might go do that, maybe through some of the past three dollars that DEQ provides. Maybe there's some room for that in the near future.
And how much did you say they were?
Couple of bucks, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And they're.
They correlate pretty well. We would, they're called purple air monitors. When we take a monitor like that, we might want to tweak it a little bit, put in a different kind of box or monitoring situation. But we've correlated with our PM two point five monitor that we have here in town, make sure it lines up. Cause some of them aren't exactly accurate. They come out of box, maybe pretty accurate down in the very low range where you get some higher, higher than these are overpredicting.
It wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't use that to just be a reference.
Right. An indicator of what smoke is like.
I've, individually, I've always, I'd rather have absolute information. You know, we have the long topometer and you've heard my argument many times. We have diesel pickups parked around it.
Exactly. This would help show some of that too.
Yeah, I know what height that said at. Is it, is it said at five and a half foot where people's normal breathing is or is it set at ten foot? I mean, I've always. Does it say?
It's a little higher, a little higher than a breathing zone and you can, for where it is in security, keep it within that fenced area. But it could be, it's about ten feet. But it would be interesting to see if, if some mornings, oh, very different reading. Yeah, maybe it's the site, but we'd be able to see that and that'd be great.
Well, as Don knows much better than me, I drive, Marty said that very good every morning and you can see one chimney that's creating the problems for a lot of people. And if that's close to the.
Where the wind's blowing that.
Yeah.
Where the winds created that way, you have a little windy.
I always drive up by Cadmus, right there, like the curve there and I sit there and watch. And then I can go drive to that little area and hope that I pinpoint the right house. And I also go out off of, by Rabbit Hill Road, by where Jeremy lives and I start there and then come into town and you can pinpoint the north end. So those are your high spots that somewhat cover. And if you come in from the west, you can pinpoint right down center uptown. And that's where you see, and you do see it and you can see it from both sides, but still.
And one thing that I probably need to leave, but one thing I just want to make sure is the county and the town need to be on the same page with their ordinances. Cause it's not going to do me any good send Don or somebody out to monitor the areas if we have no teeth to do anything about.
Well, I have to say the difference in the ordinance, I believe, is you guys have mandatory and we don't. And if there's no funding available, and I'm speaking individually, if there's no funding available for the urban growth boundary, which we know that there's a lot of people that probably reside in those areas that don't have the money. I'm not comfortable making it mandatory. Government comes in and says it's mandatory, you have to do this.
But this was.
I'm more of, let's find a way so that they have an opportunity to get into compliance than for the strong handed government to come in and say it's mandatory, period. And that's me personally, Roberta, and that's where I was whenever the ordinance was done five months ago and I'm still there.
So you go to even monitor the urban growth area because if you guys aren't going to back us, then we have no teeth. So why do we do that? I mean, that's my question. It doesn't make sense because we have to be on the same page.
Well, we are on the same page as far as monitoring. As far as making a mandatory is that, that you have to not burn on those days or you can't have a sole source. That's where we're not on the same page. If somebody's out of compliance on that day and monitoring them, they're out of compliance.
But we, right now, we have no teeth doing about it. And so that's just, I just wanted to bring that up because it's.
Well, I'm here.
Important.
I'm curious, in the town one, it's not an urban growth boundary, what have you been doing to those folks that are out of compliance?
Well, she can go right up and tell them not to burn or go to an officer, go up and tell them not to burn.
Go beyond that.
I haven't had to.
Yeah.
I've had pretty decent luck and people have been very nice this last couple of times that I've had to do it. Last year, I think I've had to go to five or six places and granted, three of the people that I've had to go talk to were new to town, didn't know anything about it, like Brad said. I had flyers I could hand to them that explained our air quality program and then explained what red, yellow and green burning days were. Gave them the website where I find how to calculate the numbers and where I bought them from. And they were absolutely great. I have no problems with it whatsoever.
And so have you had a problem on the urban growth boundary site?
Um, I have two, I have one in particular and they burn things in their fireplace that they're not supposed to and he's constantly coming in and talking to me. And I've told him to come over here a couple of times to see where I, where we could go because at the time I have no teeth to go and say, knock on their door and say, hey, could you please not burn your kitty litter? Could you please stop burning your trash in your fireplace? As to where I had to call Peter because it had gotten so bad. And I got the ordinances and I mailed the DEQ ordinance to them. So now we're back where they're burning again in their fireplace. He came, I seen him in Safeway and he brought it to my attention. So that's where I'm kind of at. I have a few people that, and one that, he doesn't want to comply anyways and he's just shy of my street. And he has let me know how he feels very vocally and I just. Just think it was a great.
So he has dropped the bomb and leaves.
But really, just so that we're working together. So at least if she does go out in the urban growth boundary, we have some kind of. Or she can go talk to them or, you know, something if we're going to work together with everything.
Or they're going to be followed by county code.
Yeah. I don't know that the county told her.
I don't, I don't know if you have them, but.
I.
Well, we have a nuisance ordinance, but we're certainly dealing with wood stoves.
Well, that's one thing I did do is give out ordinances and once they got those ordinances and they see that ORS number or whatever the state number is for burning, they're like, oh my gosh. I'm in trouble. Am I going to get a ticket? And then they start paying. You're not getting a ticket as of this moment, but this is your warning.
So the ORS.
Not, it's not technically an ORS, but like the DEQ.
So I will, I will check into it, Roberta, but I'm trying to rewind. I don't have ordinance in front of us. I was almost thinking that the program was working so well that you guys might consider not making yours a mandatory ordinances that you were complying.
As if we have to, don't we? Because of how like the red days that we've had, isn't that even different?
Well, you probably still have to just comply, but hopefully there'll be a day when we don't have to.
I actually have.
People don't like it. Have a hand to go. I don't.
Okay, it's a division number. My bad. Not, it's not ORS. It's the decision code that I have for the state regulations.
State regulations.
That's the one.
And the urban growth boundary is not exempt from the state regulation.
That's for burning garbage.
Yeah. And I don't have the jurisdiction to walk onto their property because I know in your guys' ordinance, I don't think.
But by the agreement.
And maybe I misread.
By the agreement in here.
I think you can act as an agent to knock on doors.
Okay. Cause I don't mind talking.
I think you can do that. It just gets in the enforcement side if they are burning on a red day.
I don't want it to become us against them, talking to the town against the county, but I believe whenever we accepted this back when, there was acceptance from the town to do the monitoring of the urban growth boundary. And I think that's in here somewhere.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah.
Cause that's why.
And that was, that was an agreement.
Yeah. They did not, the town had knocked on doors.
What did you say, Peter? I can?
Yeah. I thought you could.
I was.
The town, right here in your thing, it says the town is still in charge of patrol and monitoring the county's urban growth boundary air quality program, right here.
I think there was a miscommunication.
And so.
That's monitoring. I can't.
It gets under enforcement.
Enforcement is.
They'll be enabled.
So just to enforce this, whether it's a mandatory sole source or not, this is still enforceable.
But if I'm driving around monitoring, does it specifically state that I could go up there and.
So.
Knock on a door.
Take care of it?
Yeah.
Okay, then I misunderstood the communication part of it.
Well, that's why, that's why when we did this a number of years ago, five, four years ago, that we did include at least up to the urban growth boundary. I mean, it was proposed that we're going to do the whole kind of thing.
Oh yeah, I don't want to do the whole.
No, we wound it back to the urban growth boundary. The town would have the right to go and take care of people who were.
It just.
Being taken care of.
The full enforcement side of it is a little different in the county than the town.
Well, it doesn't sound like once we're able to make contact, as Don said, we really don't.
It's having a huge enforcement problem.
I only have one that I'm overly concerned over and I won't deal with him. I will deal with his landlord. Only because I don't think it would end well on my end.
And the person has a supplemental heat source as well.
That he said he didn't have, but he does.
Has available.
So I think.
Yeah.
I think if you can figure out, I totally have the impression that we made the agreement and that the town would be monitoring and enforcing all the way out on the urban growth boundary. If technically there's a problem there, we can correct that, I believe. But.
I'm not sure, but there's a common understanding of that. So it would be good to, I think, to have some additional conversation.
But being a no whod, whenever it works it, and here we're worried about one person that we know we're going to have that with our. that we know we're going to have that, whether it's town or the county, that are just going to be defiant. And that's all we really have, is one, maybe two, in the whole urban growth boundary, in the town? It's working pretty well. We're going to have defiant people no matter what, and, and even with the defiant people, sometimes if you enact and you go to the... From a fine to whatever it is, it can be worse sometimes than working with them. It can cause councils and counties and people involved to monitor them. I, I guess what I'm saying is, it seems like Don's working pretty well with this person, and I'll, I'll bet you that it'll turn around a little bit. If we get a little more teeth that you need, or find out what, what there needs to be, and you have support from the commissioners, that's the state rules, and you're monitoring that side of it. But really, we have one, maybe two people on all of Lakeview Urban Growth Boundaries?
Well, I mean, it just, it depends on where you're at. Like, I have to be careful, because I do have a fine line. You have some that get medical notes from their doctor saying that they have to have the wood heat, because it's direct heat. So there, again, I have to monitor who that is.
I, I, I guess, I'm seeing...
It's, it's a catch twenty-two, Brad.
I'm seeing we've come a long ways. If I go back to, gosh, it'd be, I don't know if you're even there, Peter. Two thousand six, maybe before that, that we had a meeting over at Senior Center. I won't mention the old fellow's name, he's passed, but he told everybody to go to hell. He's going to burn creosote railroad ties, he don't care what anybody thinks.
Yeah.
Due today that we only have a couple of people. We have, it's bigger than that, I know, but...
We have a few, and I don't catch all of them, I don't know why.
But we've come a long way.
We're monitoring.
We've come a long way.
And catch, catch them early, before it becomes a...
And at nighttime, I have caught a few. Because you can see it at night, and then think, oh, Don's not out at 10 o'clock at night. She's not going to catch us burning.
Well, I, I tell you, Don, I wouldn't want to be the gym police in Lakeview when the culture is to burn wood.
No, you don't. Because you do get those threats, that they're going to throw pieces of wood through your windshield that they catch you driving around.
So then they ask, how do your ordinance, as you pointed out, show, excuse me, shows that you're giving permission for the town to issue warning letters? How do you, how did you envision that happening? Us having, the town having letterhead, county letterhead, and having the town manager sign those?
Well, if I remember, if I remember right, that was presented to us from then acting, or then being the town manager, Ray Sims, and that that wouldn't be an issue. As far as letterhead, I never even thought about that.
No, I didn't either.
See, that stuff was not...
We just have to get to this.
So you're under the impression that you have given the town authority to issue warning letters to county residents outside of town limits, and that you do?
Yeah, and, and agreeing to the PM advancement plan that we agreed to back then, was, that was what was presented to us.
Okay.
And this is an update to the plan, and I don't have heard of no plan, but everything that came to us at that time, and, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm just going off of memory, but that was...
I have last year's plan.
As a matter of fact, I believe that was talked about fairly extensively, that we were not willing to go out and have a county person go out and do that.
And I think that's the reason, I mean, you know, going back to the earlier statement I made about the whole Goose Lake Valley, even up and over the waters, that we said, no way, no how. And when the question was asked, well, what about the urban growth boundary? Yes, and this is where that discussion came in. You know, we weren't going to be the woodsman police, but we understood the impact of the growth boundary could have on the town of Lakeview, which is part of us, too. Attainment. So that was kind of mutually agreed upon. Where it's at in any of these documents, I don't know, but I do clearly remember that discussion. So however, we need to formalize that, that's fine.
There's, there's funding available that's passed down through the annual contract for doing the compliance checks.
Yeah, that's, that's a big part of our funding.
Yeah.
The DEQ comments right here, I have it highlighted.
They fund fifteen thousand a year.
DEQ has provided funding to town electric through inter-agency agreement.
Yeah.
And, and anyways.
Okay, so where are we at? Well, anything else, Rachel? You're still waiting?
Uh, no, I don't think so. But I just wanted to confirm that what Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Wood just said is yes, we'd had a lot of meetings out in the, you know, within the community about where, where we're going to extend it, and we had a larger discussion about the, really far out, but we did bring it back to the urban growth boundary. I think where there was a little bit of disconnect is sort of sinking of the ordinances and things like that, but it's on like, so, so I think we're okay.
And Rachel, you were heavily involved in all of that?
I was. I remember those things.
So this brings us to the point of looking for concurrence with the advance plan, with the annual update. And in, in needing concurrence, we would forward it on to EPA as part of our commitment to EPA, or commitment to the PM Advanced Program. Probably just going off. Probably a crank call. I get more...
It's probably Rachel.
I get more ill-fated whatever hoax calls than anything. So we're looking for concurrence on the PM, it's Action Plan Update.
Okay. So as of last night, I got a phone call, but I was laying down, so we're going to slim that to for official nerves.
Well, I, I thought that, I thought we was going to have a joint meeting, the town and the county, after the new council came on and the new boards came on to accept the David PM Advancement Plan. I thought this was an update to us at this point. Or are you asking for us to accept the David Plan, is that what you're...
Right, right. And normally, we would submit it a few weeks ago, at this time of year, after the fiscal federal year.
Right.
I don't see anything in here for this year, you know, and there will be any board and council.
Right, for 2018.
Yes, I don't see anyone that's a yield breaker. I think it does, it is going to pay us to, if we need to clarify a few things, but that could be more internal when EPA learn about just our local town, county strategy, strategies.
So, and we've reached out to commissioners-elect. I know one was very busy, the other one must have got sidetracked, so.
Yeah.
Entertaining a motion?
A motion or concurrence? These, Peters, what are concurrence?
Well, they, they, positive difference in concurrence and making an act of motion.
Motion to concur.
There you go.
There you go, Janine, thank you.
I, I, I will make a motion to accept the Lakeview Area PM Advancement Program Action Plan Update as presented.
I'll second it, a little discussion, if you don't mind.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
Well, just, I didn't think, I've looked at this over the last week, just thumb through it. But Lakeview area, and to me, when we talk about this plan, I mean, for the total partnership, just, just a round of thought. The town of Lakeview and Lake County area PM Advanced Program Plan seems more reasonable to tie us together.
Does that not say on there?
No, it just says, Lakeview Area PM Advanced Footman Action Plan.
You went around on that? Because I think you was, wasn't just, because before it said Lakeview PM Advanced Action Plan, and he's like, well, it's not Lakeview, it's town and county.
Well, in that area is what the county's role is in, as well as in the town, because as I just said, the town is part of the county. But I don't know what you think about that, Commissioner?
I put it on my stuff, but it says town of Lakeview, Lake County.
Exactly, the summary's stretched out that way.
Yeah, just the opening page, that's all. But listen, when you guys can think that up, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Peter, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel. Thanks, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you very much. Sorry it took you a while to get on.
Thanks, Ma'am.
So people are welcome to stay. We have one other item on our regular board meeting.
Can I just fill this in?
Yes.
This is something that I have, that I've done up, and I've just been getting through some people that have come in. Just kind of a short version, that can make it a little bit more for wood people.
And so, Don, maybe it's appropriate, I don't know, but maybe it is only appropriate for it to be in the area that's urban growth boundary and the town of Lakeview. Maybe it's not appropriate for it to go all the way up north.
No, not for this.
Yeah. But, yeah?
But for the urban, or for up north, I could, I have the...
Oh, that'd be good.
Yeah. But this could be for town and urban.
Yep. I like this. Thank you for your cooperation.
Yes, thanks, Don.
Oh, you're most welcome. It's my face.
It's smart of you guys.
Bye, guys, thank you so much.
So, moving on, we have carried forward layer uplifting for sheriff's vehicles.
Can I interject real quick, please? Did you still want to talk to Peter?
Do you have any legal updates?
You were reaching out, is there no legal updates?
No.
If there's no legal updates, then get a hold of him eventually, because other things. Okay, so moving on, the first one, we had the upfitting of a pickup. This is an individual pickup for the sheriff's department. We've had quite some discussion. I believe the proper way to prove this is to prove the quote, and, and within the motion to show that there will be an offset to this quote by the amount that will come out of the communications fund.
That's the 4250.
Yeah. So, I'll just make that motion. I'll make the motion to accept the layer upfitting quote, outfit one sheriff's pickup in the amount of $26,190. That amount will be reused through a transfer of funds from the communications fund, which is managed by the sheriff's department, $4,250.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is, we haven't got to this this morning. Police, police manager, Melanie, I'll let you give an overview of potential purchase of up to two vehicles in this budget year we're in right now.
So as we discussed a little bit yesterday, I provided you guys with a spreadsheet on options for purchases. Last year, we purchased police package vehicles, which are significantly more cost to the county. I've done research with other counties, and they all say they're great. They wish they could buy them all the time, but they don't always have the funding to do that. So I feel like we need to really evaluate whether this is a need and a want, and the impact on next year's budget. We have assured Jake Greer that the community corrections juvenile department will be receiving a vehicle, and the sheriff's department will be receiving a vehicle. I want to make sure that we have the best beginning budget, excuse me, the best beginning fund balance that we can to make sure that can happen, because I'm worried about budget cuts next year, and I feel like this is an easy target. And I don't want Jake to be passed over again, because he's had the same vehicle for 13 years. And we really need to make sure they're in safe car. So I will let you guys make the final call on this budgeting decision. But myself and the vehicle committee all believe that regular police vehicles will be great. Historically, that's what we've used, and haven't had any major problems with that.
So you, it doesn't say it on the front page, Mally, but you and the vehicle committee are recommending option two?
Yes.
Okay, I, I will make that motion that we approve.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the recommendation from our plate manager and vehicle committee to purchase two sheriff's vehicles with option two. Further discussion? The, I'm reading through here, Melanie, those, the cost fully outfitted is... I'm trying to break it down per vehicle. Just, just to put that in record.
Fully upfitting is, for the two, it is, it's about $26,000 each for upfitting.
Yeah, my rough numbers are coming up to closer to...
Twenty-eight.
Well, I'm looking at the Leschwab upfitting and the other upfitting, that's adding those together. So the, give me, one vehicle fully outfitted is...
One fully big upfit, a vehicle in the outfit is approximately $54,000.
Fifty-four, fifty-four thousand, so roughly.
Total cost. And then the cost per mile for that is about 43 cents with the anticipated lifetime.
And for a PP vehicle, it's about $75,000 for one vehicle, fully outfitted. So the efficiency and the savings to the taxpayers and to $25,000 per vehicle. Thank you for the good work. I will call for the questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I just wanted to get out there the good work that you had. That's, pull those both together, that's $50,000.
Yeah, you deserve a witness.
That's not a record.
I know, and I'm going to propose that.
Did he make that in a motion?
I was a witness.
Okay, there's no legal updates, nothing further due?
Since making this here with the town council, I would make a motion that we increase the salary of the council members by a hundred percent of what they're currently getting.
And before I second that, where are you going to find the funding?
Of what they're currently getting?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we don't think we're going to have to.
They get a small stipend.
Do we?
I think so.
Oh, I didn't know they did. I thought the mayor was the only one.
I'll just say that motion.
Certainly wasn't doing it for money.
I guess we'll probably know, I'll bet you Nicky will find that out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for setting in our meeting, I can appreciate that. As you heard, which Michelle say, the town is the county, and the county is the town. We look forward to working together. Thank you for setting in our meeting. And with that, we will adjourn at 2:30.
As soon as Garrett turns off his camera, hopefully he has.